Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gernat. Jerem. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Fledgling Regent's and remain standing, please, while I introduce my councilmember, Pete Cutler.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a point of personal privilege this morning, so September 20th is a big day in my family. I have a little sister with a birthday today, Elsa Festerson. I have a nephew today with a birthday, Daniel Paul Crawford. And my mother and my grandmother's birthdays are later this week, so I just wanted to wish everybody a happy birthday. Thank you.
You're supposed to sing, cards in the mail.
Where was the song? You left off the song.
City Council certified publication of daily records, official newspaper on September 16th, during the Republican Council and regular city council meeting September 20th, 2016. Current copy of the open meetings X is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. Thanks you for joining us today, and as courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to please turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance is on final reading and planning board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 1113 North 72nd Street from limited office district to limited commercial district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just expressing my support for this measure. This is a former dental office near Creighton Prep that's being converted into a good use, I think, for veterinary purposes, and will be a nice addition to that neighborhood, so I'd motion approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item number five. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gernat. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. We'll take six through eight. It's one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located at 909 South 107th Avenue from development reserve district and community commercial district to community commercial district. Portions of property are located within a flood fringe and floodway overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is the resolution that preliminary plat entitled DMT is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is resolution that the plat entitled DMT is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through eight are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any... Oh, I'm sorry. Proponent?
Hello.
You can give us your name.
My name is Vern Dalek, and I'm a property owner for the property adjacent to this piece of property. And...
Oh, you're an opponent? You're an opponent?
I'm an opponent.
You're against it? Okay, I didn't call those yet, but anyway, let me see. Hold on, hold on. I don't think there are any proponents, so if you're an opponent, let me ask one more time. Any proponents for item six through eight?
Yep. No? Yes, there we go. Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I was collateralally involved in this, and I think Thompson, Driesen, Dorner were carrying the ball in this primarily with respect to the rezoning and replating. They are not here today, so I thought I would stop in and at least, you know, answer any questions, but I think it's just a simple rezoning and replating of this property, so I guess we'll wait and hear what the opponent has to say about this, and then maybe answer any questions that he might have or you might have regarding the application. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, my name is Vern Dalek, and I'm a partner, well, he's my partner, on this piece of property. We own the Shaker Place Building, which was the property just to the south of this property, and I guess we're here to try to stop the proposal that the planning board approved it back in March. I'm an accountant, and I was busy, and I didn't do all the research that I should've at the time to figure out what was happening over there, but what they're going to do is redo the hotel, make a four-story high-rise, and split the lot and do an office building on the other side, and I'm concerned about parking. I got some handouts. Can I pass those out?
Sure, you can give them to Chuck Clark here, please. Continue.
Okay. That it does meet the planning code. I've talked to the planning department, and they assured me that it does meet the planning codes for, you know, the number of parking stalls per hotel, but I think the code maybe needs to be changed. The code for hotels, there is no difference between a regular hotel and a full-service hotel, and a full-service hotel, besides having a hotel that has a restaurant, that has a bar, and it has a banquet facility. And as you can see from the handout that I did, right now, the Regency Lodge has 144 hotel rooms, and they got 253 parking stalls, so there's 109 additional parking stalls for when they have meetings or people using the restaurant or the bar. Under the proposal to split the lot into two, there's going to be a fewer hotel rooms, only 132, but there's going to be only 161 parking stalls for that, only leaving 29 additional stalls for their restaurant, their bar, their employees, and their banquet facility. And their banquet facility, I think, holds 150 people, and so I'm concerned about parking. The Marriott Hotel, it's a three... they're in Regency, has 300 rooms. They got 505 parking stalls, so they got 205 extra for people and guests that come for banquets. The Comfort Inn on 72nd and Grover Street, 172 rooms, 262 parking stalls, so they have 90 extra parking stalls. And Ramada Inn on 72nd Street, 365 rooms, they got 857, because it's a big banquet facility, and so you can see they have 492 extra stalls. And so my concern is that with only 29 extra stalls for the restaurant, the bar, their employees, and the banquet facility, there's not going to be enough parking, which is going to infringe upon my property. And I don't know if you're familiar where the Regency Lodge is, but on a third of it, the interstate abuts it. On the other side, third, the crick runs that there's no parking there, and coming forward, there's no street parking, because the street that goes there about a block in front, there's no parking on that street, and you have Pacific Street, which there's no parking on Pacific Street. So the extra people coming there are going to have to park someplace, and I don't want them infringing upon my property for their parking. And so with that, as I guess, I'm hoping that you people can, you know, find a way to get this changed or delayed, and so that they can maybe add some parking to their plans. You know, they could put parking with their office building, or they could put parking with their hotel building, and so that they would have additional parking. And questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, is it rebuttal time?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I had to refresh my recollection in talking to Dave Fanslaw of the planning department. There are actually 223 parking spaces required. There are 284 parking spaces provided, so we actually have an overage of parking for the two uses, for the two lots of 61 spaces. There's a notation on the final plat that requires reciprocal parking between the two lots being created, so there's more than enough parking here, and you have to remember that the parking in a hotel situation is primarily after 5 o'clock, where offices generally 8 to 5, so we don't believe that there's going to be any parking requirement. And the city, as a matter of course, on numerous occasions allows for reciprocal parking to meet parking requirements, and again, it is a notation on the plat. There is a 61 parking spaces over what's required by code. So I know Mr. Fanslaw is here as well, if you have any questions of him, but, and if you have any questions of me, happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have someone from planning, either Fanslaw or Rockwell.
Good afternoon, council. Dave Fanslaw, city planning.
Thank you, Dave.
Sure.
In terms of how many parking spaces there are now, you're saying that there's 61 over the requirement.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is with the site plan that was submitted as part of the rezone and the planned improvements on the site, they would be required to have 223 stalls, and on that plan, there are 284 parking spaces shown, so that would be 61 over what the code would require.
Okay. A lot of times, citizens will go by tradition, history, precedence, and in this case, they're used to having 1.76, and then they're going to go down to 1.22. So even though they're 61 over, they've been existing with a certain amount of parking extra, and in their minds, they've gotten used to that amount. Is that kind of maybe... can you kind of feel for them?
Well, I guess it depends on the situation. I mean, who's to say that the 1.76 wasn't way overparked since the buildings that are there now were built? So I guess all we can do today is look at what today's code requires as far as parking and go from there.
I would like to say that I go to that area quite often. There are meetings that are held there, and there are a couple of establishments that I've gone to, and my accountant used to be there, and it does seem like it was always full all the time. And again, I'm making the appeal on behalf of the complainant that is there any way to get those numbers back up to what they are now? Is there any way to add parking to an area that, you know, might bring in the numbers back up?
I'm looking over to Larry, maybe for their... I guess I'll point out that what's before the council is a two-lot subdivision with a simple rezoning. The back northern part of the property right now is Zone DR, and when this application came in, staff looked at it, there was already parking on that DR piece, existing parking, so the rezone is only to change that line from CC to DR, to kind of clean it up, if you will. Other than that, what's before council is a two-lot subdivision. Obviously, it's in conformance with the master plan. It's supposed to be office and commercial. It's being used as such now. They're going to demo some of the existing hotel, add some more rooms, and do a 30,000 square foot office building on the southwest portion of the site. If there can be more parking spaces added, I'm not sure I didn't do the plan.
Are we going from a two-story hotel to a four-story hotel?
A portion of it, yes. That's what their plan shows.
And so how many increased rooms is that?
I believe it's 84.
84 increased rooms, and we're going to go slightly down on the parking, because you're saying they're overparked now?
They're overparked now, and they're overparked as proposed.
Okay.
By 61 stalls.
This sheet that was given to us by Mr. Dalek, is it accurate? Have you seen it?
Nope. First time I've seen it, hadn't had time to look at it.
Mr. Dalek, do you have another copy of that?
I have it.
Okay.
But I haven't had time to study it or check the numbers, so...
His first column says Regency Lodge current, 144 rooms. Regency Lodge proposed, 132 rooms. Are those numbers not correct?
I don't know. I didn't put the sheet together.
But according to you, it's 84 more rooms.
They're tearing down part of the hotel and they're adding 84 new rooms. So based on the proposed addition and their existing rooms and the new office building, they're required to have 223 stalls.
Okay.
Providing 284.
What is the rule, again, the city's rule and/or precedent regarding banquet facilities, hotels that have that and then hotels that don't? How do you account for parking?
We don't. We... the one-to-one, the parking requirement for hotels takes care of those uses.
One room to one car?
Historically, we haven't had problems with hotels with banquet facilities or bars or restaurants in them.
So the extra banquet travel vehicles coming there is handled by what? Offices are closed, or how is it handled?
Well, in this case, it could be the office that may or may not be open at the time something's going on at the hotel. The parking requirement for hotels, assuming all the rooms are occupied at one time all the time, we know that's not the case, so there's always extra parking.
Okay. All right. All right. No more questions. Mr. President.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Is there a motion? Moved to approve. Second roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. No. Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six through eight are passed. Six to one. Pursuant City Council Rule 7E, agenda items number nine through 10 shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant City Council Rule 7E, agenda items 11 through 14 shall be laid over for two weeks. Pursuant City Council Rule 7E, agenda item number 15 shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 16, New Frontier Bar, 8516 North 30th Street, Class C liquor license application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi. Mike Barak, 8204 North 28th Avenue.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, Mike. How are you?
Hi, Pete. How are you?
We had a chance to meet, I know, when we unveiled the Florence mural several weeks ago, and I'm impressed with your plan for the bar and the renovations.
Thank you.
And I think it's a great addition to what we're trying to accomplish there with the streetscape and business renovation, too. Do you want us to take a minute and explain what you're doing and what the bar will offer?
We're changing the bar. It's tradition, it's a historic bar in Florence, and my wife and I have lived in Florence our entire lives. We want to be part of this new regeneration of the neighborhood with the new restaurants that have gone in there. We're taking the bar, and over time, we're restoring the entire building back to its original 1916 condition, design-wise. We want it to have a feel somewhat like the old market type of place. We're going to be having live music. It's a small, little music venue. It's always been that way, but we want to be a part of the community. We want it to be a safe place for families can go for benefits and birthdays and anniversaries. We live there. We want it to be a nice place.
Great. Well, thanks, and I appreciate your investment in it. And 1916, it's a long time ago, and I think a lot of folks in Omaha don't realize that Florence is Nebraska's original historic business district, giving it all its history there, so thanks for your participation.
Thank you, sir.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 16, and no further lights. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gernat. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
16 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 17, Buc-E's Express, number 40, 107 South 40th Street, request permission for reconstruction of their interior, of their present package liquor license location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Steve Kappa, 16356 Greve Street, Box Inc.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 17. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gernat. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 18 through 23 were held on September 13th, 2016. Moved and seconded to approve items 18 through 23. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gernat. Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
18 through 23 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 24 through 38 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Stube, do you have someone here for number 28?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Yeah, Ken Smith, Parking Division Manager is here to address questions on that particular agenda item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Smith. Would you please take us through briefly the purpose and need for what you're trying to do here with this study, so that people understand what this expenditure is and why you're doing it?
Sure. Ken Smith, Public Works. The Kimley Orange Study is basically updating us on our policy changes we made last October. It's been about a year now since we've extended the hours of operation and increased some of the fees at the meters. Really, this is an analysis of those changes and where we're at today as far as supply and demand within our parking area. This is to help us evaluate those 40-some thousand spaces that are out there and to continue to address the situation in downtown as far as parking.
And just so everyone's clear, it's downtown. You're updating in terms of studying the changes that you made last year, how they're doing, and whether any additional recommendations are made or adjustments?
Yes. So I look at parking as a product, and this is the way we got to figure out how to market our product and where those pricing elements need to be, and certainly the changes we made last year, what's that effect been, you know, one year since taking place?
And the source of the funds is... is it not coming from the revenue from parking meters and garages?
Yes, so it's coming from the Parking Air Price Fund.
Thank you.
Ms. Milton.
I just had a question, because it was brought up earlier that we had paid for another consulting contract in regards to parking. We did that, and then we made the changes as a result of that consulting contract. Is that correct?
The electrical con...
No.
No, there was a question that we had a parking consulting contract a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That was the update. There was a study done in 2011. There was an update to that in 2014, because I wanted to establish a benchmark where we're at then, because parking is dynamic. It changes year to year. We get people moving in and out, and certainly this is the update from the 2014 study to figure out where we're at.
Okay, so in 2014, we had a consulting contract. We implemented those recommendations, and so this consulting contract is then to review the updates?
The updates, yes. Yes.
And do you have any figures on the increase? Is there an increase in the revenue fund as a result of the changes we made?
There has been.
Do you know what that is?
An exact dollar amount?
Rough estimate?
I know we're in the black now with the Parking Air Price Fund. We can certainly go over those numbers. I have that information, and I can provide that for you.
Well, it might be only because I think there were a few people asking, and the reason I'm asking is, you know, if we've increased our fees by $50,000, and now we want to pay $100,000 to look at... Does that... do you see what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah.
So if you could, before next week, just maybe present some of those figures, just as more kind of a justification, and as a reminder, if you wouldn't mind going back just historically, you know?
Yes.
We were in the red, now in the black, so maybe just... and I mean just kind of a brief summary of where we were, where we've come, and where you're hoping maybe to go with this.
Certainly, and certainly the Air Price Fund was created to continue to take those fees and invest it back into the system. If you go back to 2013, when we first started the fund, we were probably in the hole about 1.4 million. We've flipped that, and we're probably above that, by that amount. So certainly now we're using those fees to establish we're doing electrical upgrades, we're going to be updating the equipment, we're doing studies, so we want to stay on top of things, and that's why we're bringing these consultants in to help us reinvest our fees back into the system.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I read, I really... almost reminds me of some of the education jargon that I used to deal with. You say data analysis, solution identification, development of design guidelines for the creation of a strategic plan. I love it when I hear strategic plan. Do we have a strategic plan right now?
For parking?
Yes.
We had one that was done in 2011. The 14, all it did was look at the numbers, but this new one, we're going to start investing in, and this is kind of the first stage of maybe other studies that would happen. How do we invest these funds now that we have a surplus in parking? How do we invest that and kind of give us a role or strategic plan on moving ahead?
Yeah. When I think of strategic plan, you develop the plan, and then you do action plans, and you evaluate those action plans. Seems like you've already done some evaluation, so you must have some kind of... to me, I feel some of these words are a little bit misleading, because when I think of strategic planning, I think of a plan, and then you do action plans to see whether you're meeting your needs of your strategic plan. And you're telling me right now, we do not really have a strategic plan?
The 2011 identified certain strategic plans, or laid out a plan basically how we go from a past where we were losing my implement, a Parking Air Price Fund, implement some rate changes and policy changes within the system. This is really to kind of give us the next chapter in that strategic plan, is to look at how do we take, now that we've turned the corner on this fund, how do we invest those funds? How do we implement new policies? What's the next chapter in this book?
To me, it appears you've done your planning before you actually, and you're resolving some of those issues before you actually made a plan. To me, you would have made the plan, and then some of the things you've already accomplished would have been part of that action plan that would have caused some readjustment. To me, I'm just saying, I see a lot of words, but I'm going to go along with this, but I... to me, this seems like jargon.
But certainly, I think parking changes from year to year, and I need to stay on top of that as parking manager. We have 43,000 parking space in downtown. We had a company that tried to come down here before, and we didn't really have a good grip on what was happening there, so we need to continue to address the parking needs. It's a market-based economy as far as parking is concerned. It's a product that's really tied back into the economic well-being of the city, and so we need to have that constant update, demand, and analysis in order to evaluate how this product is being handled. And this is really kind of layout where we're at with the changes that happen, and then to move ahead on those investments we made and how to use the funds that are now coming in to tie it back into the system and continue to reinvest it in the system so we can bring in those groups and say, hey, we have parking, or we have something for you when they come down.
It seems like I'm battling with words here, but to me, the plan, what you're doing is an action plan of the strategic plan. That's how I see it. Well, that's fine. I get the gist of what you're trying to do. But I would be very curious to actually see the strategic plan and then the action plans that you will utilize to accomplish that. That's what I'm looking for, and that's what you're saying, we're spending 90-some thousand dollars to have somebody to help develop that strategic plan.
Yes.
So that way, we don't have to keep coming back because this is our plan, and then we do the action plans and we evaluate them.
Well, on the parking supply and demand, you really, it's recommended you try to at least every five years. And now that we made policy changes, I really wanted to get a hold on how those changes affected our, because it ties back to the economic well-being of the space that's on the streets, the space that's in the garages, if we're not getting turnover, or we don't have enough room for employees that are coming down. So we really need to stay on top of this.
Okay, that's to me where the action plan comes in. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, just one quick question. So in your remarks, you referenced why you're doing this, which I understand. You also made reference to additional things in the pipeline, chapter three and four, I guess, in your book. Are we going to keep seeing contracts of this nature and this amount coming in the short term, or is this the only one you know of for now?
This is probably the first part of a second and third phase that could come down the road. Really, this is a gather, kind of gives a foothold again on the supply and, you know, the parking supply and demand part of it, look at our future demands, start doing some research on those developments that are coming into play that are happening out there, and then really start also looking at our financials to make sure we're reinvesting them correctly. Let's lay out a roadmap of how we're going to reinvest these, this parking fees that are coming into the air price fund, and how it's going to work with different entities on a mobility strategic plan type.
And you have an estimated timeframe, is that, you know, like next, the next couple of weeks, or is that next couple of years?
The first part, probably going to take six to eight months. The next few phases will probably be within the next couple of years or so.
Okay, to me, that seems a little more reasonable. I think this is important work, and I'll support this today too, but I think we'd be reticent to keep supporting contracts of a hundred thousand dollars a clip if it was going to take that much money to get to where you need to be. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? And the motion would be on all of the, the...
Twenty-four through thirty-eight.
Twenty-four through thirty-eight. Moved and seconded to approve items twenty-four through thirty-eight, no further lights roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-four through thirty-eight are adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item thirty-nine, ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen, to provide for the applicability of the restaurant occupation tax to certain food vendors to clarify the enforcement of the restaurant occupation tax.
Public hearing, well, the public hearing was held on seven, nineteen sixteen. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, first, is there, just to refresh everybody where we were when we left off, we were talking about whether to amend this proposal to, as we look at the restaurant tax, as to whether there should be any reduction in terms of the revenue that we collect as a city in light of what the addition of the food truck collections will bring in with the surpluses that the city is running in terms of our revenue needed to operate the city versus the cost exceeding last year to the tune of twelve million this year, estimated at seven million. And then since then, I've had an opportunity to look further, the reserve account of the city continues to grow. This year, I think it's at seven point eight million, supposed to be eight point one next year. So the thought was, if we're taking in millions more revenue than it's actually costing us, let's look at a deeper dive in terms of our revenue sources, the deeper dive in terms of the surpluses and whether we're actually needing all this revenue that we're taking in. So in terms of the surpluses, we learned that the primary cause of the multi-millions in budgetary surpluses has been this dramatic lower-than-budgeted number in terms of healthcare expenditures. That is, we're budgeting for the past several years at a rate assumed expenditures for healthcare, millions more than we're actually incurring. So there was a proposal to amend this last week that I made to take the rate from two point five to two point two five. And then there was a motion to amend the amendment proposal that I think our parliamentarians said you can't amend an amended proposal to reduce the rate only by that windfall that the city would have in terms of the three hundred thousand that this would be estimated to bring in in 2017, so it would have been from two point five to two point four seven. Since then, we haven't really looked in, if this were to pass today and go into effect in 2016, it would be, I think they're estimating twenty-five thousand a month, increased revenue to the city, so there was really no accounting in terms of our discussion last week of the windfall to the 2016 budget, or whether we should address that. So at this point, after thinking about it, I think the proposal made by Councilmember Thompson last week in terms of the two point four seven is something I'm willing to agree to, and so that would be my motion. Hope I get a second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion purposes. Mr. Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to go back even just a little bit farther on what we were asked to do the first time, and that was to take an industry that has grown rather rapidly, bring that industry into the level playing field of collecting and providing the city with a portion under the restaurant tax ordinance. That's what we were asked to do. That was the highway that we were on to get us from bringing an entity into an area that was felt it was appropriate, and the industry had discussions with the city. I asked that industry's spokesperson if he had, or their organization had a dog in this fight, and I said yes or no, and he says, no, they don't. I then asked the city, are they in progress of working on the operational side, yes or no? The answer was yes. But getting back, moving the food truck industry into that ordinance that covers the restaurant tax was what we were originally asked to do. And we got off, there was an offer up all of a sudden, and we started to talk about the reduction in the restaurant tax. It got down to two point two five, and then went back up, it threw the discussion to two point four seven. And that's where we left it. My feeling is that discussion on the restaurant tax should be in and of itself, not attached to anything else. We've provided and approved a budget for 2017. I would think, and this is just my opinion, that that discussion should be held when we start the budget talks for 2018, early in 2017, when we start that process. We being, of course, the administration starts that, and then they go through what I call the looking at the wish list from all of the departments, and then the magic wand, if you will, comes into playing thing, how, what revenue do we have coming in, and they make their best estimate. And then that's packaged, then it's sent down to us, and we have an opportunity to put our thoughts into it and make amendments. Went through that process for 2017, it was approved, and I just feel that's where this discussion should be, not attached to what we originally came here to do of moving an industry into the restaurant tax. They serve food, they're not arguing that point, they're willing to collect that and give that back to the city. It's sort of like the local utility that collects our sewer use fee and gives that back to the city on your gas and your water bill. And they're willing, and that industry, the food truck industry is willing to do that. I go through all of that, I think this has become convoluted a little bit, and I'm going to pinch myself as I say this, but I'm going to make a motion to withdraw the ordinance to amend. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's been moved and seconded, let's...
I'm not sure we can do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can either.
We have a motion to amend, now we have a motion to withdraw the...
I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, I didn't hear you.
Well, we're checking.
Oh. We're consulting.
Buster Brown, City Clerk, I believe you need to vote on the amendment first, and then if, Gary, you want to make your motion to withdraw, after that you can.
Well, okay, we have, we have, we have Mr. Jaram's motion on the floor, which was seconded.
Correct.
We would have to vote on that first?
Yes, we would.
If that fails?
Then you have the regular ordinance on the agenda.
All right. Mr. Gurnett, are you finished, or do you have any more additional things you want to address?
Consulting.
Okay.
Okay, I believe that's correct. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Just for clarification, it sounded to me that the substitute motion was to withdraw altogether, not necessarily to undo the amendment. And I need to hear from legal, can there, can there be, that, can that substitute motion override the original amendment?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. The answer, quick answer is no, you need to have a vote on the amendment first of all, and then the ordinance is up, and you can withdraw that ordinance as amended, if it is amended. Or not, yes. In other words, the motion to withdraw does not take precedent over an amendment. Now, if your motion to withdraw had been made before the amendment, then that's what you'd be voting on.
So in this case, it was whoever got their light on first?
You could say that, yes.
Okay.
It's a matter of procedure at this point.
Okay. We don't do this often, Mr. President, but may I have the executive privilege to take a small, a brief recess to talk to my colleague, the co-sponsor of this bill, so we can talk through how it is we should proceed. It's been allowed in the past, and I'm asking for five, ten minutes recess.
You're asking for a recess?
To talk to my colleague.
I don't have any problem with that if you put it in the form of a motion for a five-minute recess.
Mr. Clerk, how do we, how have we handled that in the past?
Well, if you, if you want to take a recess, Buster Brown, City Clerk, if you want to take a recess, you'd have to have a motion to recess for five minutes.
I'd make that motion.
Moved and seconded to recess for... Okay.
Yeah.
Parliamentary inquiries, there's a motion pending that's been seconded, does that take priority over the motion to recess?
In this case, city law, I need to, in order to know how to vote on the amendment, I need to talk to my colleague, who's the co-sponsor of the ordinance. And if I, if I don't have that, then I'll just have to abstain.
So what's the procedure?
The ruling is that the motion for a recess would take precedent over the amendment.
The recess would take precedent over the amendment?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded for a five-minute recess?
Correct.
There are a couple, there's one other light that I'd like to address first, Ms. Milton.
Sorry, I will, I will hit my light for when we, if I could save my light for after the recess. Do I need a motion for, can I sleep on it?
You need a motion, no, I'm just kidding. So it's been moved and seconded for a five-minute recess, no further lights roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls, Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Out of courtesy, yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We'll have a five-minute recess if... Mr. President, would you join us, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Light for recess. It's two fifty-two. Milton?
Here.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Festerson?
Here.
Grenat?
Yep.
Jerem?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here.
Now, back on the floor is item number thirty-nine with an amendment to change the rate to two-point-four-seven.
Okay, Dr. Thompson.
He's first.
Oh, Amy's, okay, Amy, your, her light wasn't on.
Well, I, I'll, I'll reserve it, and I'll, I'll take, go second to Dr. Thompson.
Okay, Dr. Thompson, you're first.
I need to gather my thoughts for a second here. Do you have anything?
Sure. I'll resume my spot, I just have some financial figures just to throw out there.
Okay, I have some comments to make, but I'll, I'll yield to you, Ms., Ms. Melton.
Well, and, and as you know, I mean, the tax reduction, I, I don't think I've ever said no to a tax reduction, or thought that I would, but in this particular case, I just, I ran some figures, and if we reduce the restaurant tax to two-point-four-seven, we're actually going to create a huge burden on restaurant owners, a huge burden. They're going to have to readjust all of their software, call in accountants, potentially IT people, so the cost, the cost burden to the restaurants for us reducing this restaurant tax is going to be incredible. And so, although I, I think we thought we were doing something good by doing an equal reduction to all the individual restaurant owners, I know there's one brick-and-mortar owner in, in the chamber right now, and when I ran some figures, actually, if you spend ten dollars at a restaurant, there will be no savings at all due to the rounding of taxes. So maybe if you spend eight dollars and fifty cents, since there's no rounding, you might save a penny. So the cost to the restaurants is going to be incredible, I think even the owner out here said, if you raised the tax to two-point-five-three, kind of the opposite, he'd go ahead and eat the extra point-oh-three, just because it cost him more to change. So I think if we're going to reduce the restaurant tax, we probably need, and I'm not saying we should do it today, I think we should do it in the normal budget process. I think we, that's when we need to do that, so it has to be substantial enough that we're not just going to be doing something on principle that'll end up costing our restaurant owners money. Second, if we passed it today without putting a future date in place, it would be fifteen days, so all the restaurants would have to change everything also within fifteen days. So in addition to the expense, the notice, the emails, the expense to the city would be tens of thousands of dollars, just in money, and sending all the mailings out, but then we'd have restaurants that are going to be, some would be in the old way, some would be the new way, some people wouldn't know. So although I appreciate the, the request for a tax decrease, I actually think it'll cost people more money, and, and I would agree with Councilman Grenat, I support it, a, a decrease, but I think it's something we need to discuss in the budget process. I'm open and willing, and would like to start that discussion when we start the budget hearings early in, in seventeen, and I know I've already spoke to the mayor about doing that. So I guess I just wanted to make those points, if we're going to vote on, on that amendment, we're actually voting on something that I, I believe is going to seriously affect the restaurant industry, so, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights, I just wanted to make a couple of, a couple of comments of, of my own. For as long as I've been on this council, I have recognized that there are significant needs in our community, none more so than in North Omaha. There is some movement going on in North Omaha, that movement is not nearly enough, and not nearly where it needs to be. I don't support, I'm not going to support any tax cuts till I know that, you know, we have a, that, that this city is committed to doing some of the things in North Omaha that they do in other parts of the community, and I think those other parts of the community are, are much deserving, so I'm not saying that they don't deserve it, but I'm just saying that in North Omaha, we have some needs, those needs need to be addressed. There is going to be an effort to talk about, you know, something major that we do in North Omaha, and I'm not going to want to hear that we don't have the money, because we've got the money to do a number of other things, and to not, and this is going to be coming, and people need to be prepared for it. I will not be supporting any tax cuts, and I, I don't know how my constituents or others will feel about that, but the fact of the matter is, is that I feel the needs are too great for us to be considering any tax cuts at this point, I will not be supporting that. So just wanted you to know that. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. The key thing that I heard from Councilwoman Melton is a discussion. This discussion may be a little late in the process, but I, if I'm sort of assured that this is going to be part of the budget process next year, I would support that idea, because I do think we need to take a look at this. When we say it's going to cost the restaurant people an awful lot of money to change their systems, I get that, should have thought about that when we started it. Anytime you do any kind of tax, yea or nay, you're affecting lots of people, because it always affects systems. With computerized systems anymore, though, things can be done pretty fast. So that argument has a little bit of a weakness to me, saying it's such a big deal, especially with technology today. But if, if I hear that we're going to discuss this in the future, I'm all for that. I said initially I would not do anything with the tax dealing with the trucks, food trucks, so, so I think I've been pretty clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to re.
To amend?
To, to the amendment.
Amendment.
No further lights, roll call.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
No.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
Dr. Thompson?
I'm generally, it's like it's all passing.
The amendment fails on a two-four-one passing. Now the ordinance is back as originally.
Mr. Grenat?
Make a motion to approve the original ordinance to amend Chapter nineteen to provide the applicability of the restaurant occupation tax to certain food vendors, i.e. our mobile food trucks.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, Mr., or Grenat, you, you made the note, Mr. Jerem?
I think we should point out that for those of us who supported the reduction because of the windfall, that to those who did not support the expansion of the restaurant tax, many, many of whom are small emerging businesses in this city, and, and they're struggling to get by, that, that at least we try to reduce the, the rate in which the, for the tax that they pay. And so, for those of you who, who were interested in trying to see if we could at least try to reduce it, you know, we tried, we fell short, few votes, and now we take up the fact that you're, you're likely to be brought into the restaurant tax, and I hope that as your, your small emerging businesses get started, that, that you can cope with this, this side of the business practice, and join the restaurants that are already paying in terms of adjusting their business practices to survive in that environment.
Thank you. There are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve.
Thirty-nine.
Item thirty-nine in its original form, no further lights, roll call.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
No.
Grenat?
Yes.
Jerem?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It lost on a three-to-four vote.
Resolutions, item number forty, resolution that twenty-seventh and Leavenworth North, Columbus Park CRA, located Leavenworth Street and Mason Street on the north, South, twentieth and South twenty-fourth Street on the east, Interstate four-eighty on the west, and Woolworth Avenue on the south, is hereby declared to meet the standards of a substandard and blighted area in need of redevelopment in compliance with the requirements of Nebraska Community Development Law, and is hereby designated a community redevelopment area.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty, is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Yes, this resolution would establish a community redevelopment area for basically what's essentially the northern portion of the Columbus Park neighborhood. You can see on the map here, it's generally bound on the north by Leavenworth, and Leavenworth and Mason on the north, have I four-eighty on the east, pardon me, on the west, on the east, we have twentieth, South twenty-fourth Street for a block, and then South twentieth Street, and the railroad is the southern boundary. Planning staff conducted a study of this area in response to inquiries we've had from developers who are interested in doing projects in the area, and we found that there is relatively high unemployment, comparatively low per capita income, the structures are older, having an average age of seventy-five years or more, and a declining population. So the result of the analysis, we found the area is eligible for designation as a community redevelopment area under state of Nebraska Community Development Law. It's sometimes kind of handy to see how the area fits within the larger scheme of our CRAs, that's the darkened-in area here, and the rest of that is already in the orange, is already established as a, as various community redevelopment areas. We also conducted a site survey in the field, and we could see that there are a number of opportunities for economic development projects in the area, redevelopment which would help the neighborhood. Neighborhood meeting was held on June twenty-second at the W. Del Clark Public Library, and we also had a conversation with the president of the Columbus Park Homeowners, or pardon me, Neighborhood Association. Planning department's not aware of any concerns or opposition to the designation, and we asked that the city council approve this proposal.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item forty, no further lights, roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty is adopted seven to zero.
Item number forty-one, resolution that has thirty-seven hundred Dewey tax financing redevelopment project plan for the redevelopment site located at thirty-six twenty-five Dewey Avenue, with proposed new construction of a single three-story structure consisting of twenty-four market-rate units, with garage parking stalls, recommending the city participate to the allocation of TIF, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-one, is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is an infill development project in the Blackstone neighborhood. This aerial shows the actual site that is shaded in blue, this is Dewey Avenue, this is Thirty-seventh Street, Thirty-sixth Street, and the Blackstone Hotel is in this area. Just a little bit of background to this particular site, this is the site of the former Metz mansion that caught fire in about January twenty-fifteen, and sat vacant for a few months, six, about six months, and then was finally demolished in July of twenty-fifteen, and then the site, or excuse me, it sat in a condition of burnout until it was demolished in twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifteen, and then sat vacant. And the applicant saw this as an opportunity, as he was already redeveloping in that Blackstone neighborhood, or even more so to the south, the Leavenworth neighborhood, saw this as an opportunity to continue redeveloping in the midtown area and add additional affordable and market-rate housing to the area. So this particular site, and this redevelopment plan removes blighted and substandard conditions from an urban neighborhood site, and it transforms it into a higher-density particular use. The project then will add residential uses to this particular site in more density, about twenty-four market-rate units. The mix of units is about twenty-one one-bedrooms and, and three, two-bedrooms. There will be, and I do have a rendering, so this is the site layout, and I think, to get this right with the world, so this is Thirty-seventh Street, Dewey Avenue, Thirty-sixth Street, and this is the property, this is the streetscaping that will be to the west and to the north of the property, this is the entrance to the property, so you will walk up to a, an incline, and then an enclosed area which. This is the north elevation or front elevation, so here, the door is, if you walk here, and then you walk up an incline to the front of the door, is where you enter the building. And then I have a, one other elevation to share. This is the west elevation where they will enter into a secured parking garage. This particular project is requesting five-hundred-and-eighty, thousand-two-hundred in TIF, and they are going to contribute about fifteen thousand of their TIF toward the Midtown Public Improvement Fund, which is to help reimburse the city for the two-way street conversion, being that they're so close, they do benefit from the two-way traffic. And the total amount of investment in this particular project is nearly four million. The representatives of the developer are here, if you should have any specific questions, other than that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty-one is adopted seven to zero.
Item number forty-two, resolution attached Ames Row House Tax Increment Financing Rebuild Project Plan for the redevelopment site located at fifty-eight oh-one Fowler Avenue, which proposes the construction of twelve townhome-style residential units arranged in three structures that will contain four units each, recommending the city participate to the allocation of TIF, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-two, is today, proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. The Ames Row Houses Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Project Plan involves the construction of twelve three-bedroom rowhouse-style homes on a parcel just a little over an acre, this one presently zoned R-five, located at fifty-eight oh-one Fowler. Maybe shows it a little more nicely. This is the vacant grassy area back here behind Ames Plaza, Sixtieth Street, that's right in here where the project will take place. The twelve units are arranged in three structures on the site, or will be arranged in three structures on the site.
For, for the colleagues on the council, just before you go, just so that they know, this is the area that's behind Hardland Workforce Solutions, just in case you don't, didn't know, to the, to the north. Yes.
Planet Fitness is located in this.
And Planet Fitness is in front, yes.
Also, yeah, thank you. There's a site plan showing the arrangement of the twelve units. These are low-income housing tax credit units, they'll be occupied by income-qualified households, they're also intended to be for, for veterans. Total project cost is two-point-six million dollars. The developers, the White Lotus Group, they are asking for TIF in the, TIF support in the amount of ninety-thousand-four-hundred-thirty-three dollars. Look at some elevations of the townhomes here, and it's on a site that slopes quite a bit, they look taller if you look at the backside. This is the, this would be the south elevation facing Ames Plaza, and this would be the front of the buildings. Long, the front of the buildings along Fowler. White Lotus did reach out to the neighbors and the residents of the area, invited them to a meeting about the project that was held, held July first. Again, staff on this one is not aware of any concerns or opposition to the project. Again, staff on this one is not aware of any concerns or opposition to the project. The project is consistent with the city comprehensive plan, meets all the required criteria for the TIF program, and planning staff asked for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, I got one question though. Niraj, if you can come to the mic for me, please. We did, in our discussions and, and in some of my conversations with the neighborhood, they, they, we're expecting that at some, that there will be some ratio that will be for veterans in this, in this particular unit. Is there a particular way you're going to go about doing that?
Yeah, it's Niraj Agarwal with Clarity Development, one four-four, South Thirty-Ninth Street. So for this project, I mean, generally it's open to the public. As part of the program we entered into with NIFA, which is the housing agency, we agreed that three of the twelve units would be for very low income, which is thirty percent of the area median income, but there's no set amount for veterans, it's more as there is a need. We'll attempt to work with them, and of course, work with Heartland Workforce Solutions, which is its sort of service partner, that would provide job training for veterans.
Okay. Thank you. I, and I just, I'm finished, I'm done with questioning and everything. Just wanted to let my colleagues know that I've been to a couple of conferences, and one that I went to with MAPPA specifically, there was a breakout session on cities that are doing the most to help veterans, and in one of their slides, Omaha was in the top three. Just so that everyone knows that, you know, we are doing an excellent job in addressing homeless vets and veterans with disabilities and other issues. So I think we're doing really well with that, and, and I just wanted to do that, ask a couple of questions to make sure that, that, you know, we're still increasing our efforts to, to work with vets in the community, and, and to see that slide in a, to see that slide in a, in a national presentation was, was really good to see, so. It's been moved and seconded to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jaram, Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-two is adopted seven to zero. Item number forty-three, resolution that the attached Hutmobile Holiday Inn Express Tax Improvement Financing Rebuilding Project Plan for the redevelopment site located southwest of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Farnham Street, proposing the, to completely redevelop the entire site, which will consist of the rehabilitation of the Hutmobile Building into office space on the first floor and eight loft-style market rate apartments. On the second floor, in addition to the parking spaces, a new construction of a five-story Holiday Inn Express with the city's participation in the allocation of TIF, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-three is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Another infill redevelopment project, this particular project is just west of the downtown area. This is Twenty-Fourth Avenue, Farnham Street, and what you see outlined in yellow are the properties that are a part of the project. So currently, this is the former Hutmobile site, it is a historic property, so this particular project does involve historic preservation. Just to the east of it is a vacant lot, and then directly adjacent to the south is another vacant lot. These two lots will be converted into parking that will be utilized for the tenants in the converted Hutmobile Building, as was read, eight loft-style market rate apartments on the second floor, and then office space on the, the ground floor. So this parking will help with the tenants for this particular building, but it will also serve as additional parking for this particular site, which is to the east, and this is the former Sea Store Site, which has been intermittently used for different purposes throughout the years, but has been, as we've seen along this entire corridor, vacant. These properties have been vacant for quite considerable amount of time. It will be converted into a new five-story hotel, Holiday Inn Express Hotel, and it will involve at least ninety parking spaces, again, sharing some of the parking spaces here, and the project will also involve adding some parallel parking to the east side of South Twenty-Fourth Street. So just to, again, orient you, this is Farnham Street headed west, and this is the site we're looking at. So if you're headed west, and if most of you that are headed west on Farnham, you're familiar with this site. Taking a closer look, so this is the former site that will be converted into the hotel site. This is the vacant lot next to the Hutmobile, and then this is the actual Hutmobile itself. So there will be streetscaping, improved parking, striping, so that it's very clear that this is a welcome place. I shouldn't say strapping, but there's meters already there indicating for parking. I have a preliminary, a very preliminary rendering, and as you can see, it's, it's very general. The developer is still working with our urban design team to finalize exactly how this particular project will look. The goal of the developer is to make this a little better-looking Holiday Inn Express than maybe you've seen around the city. So this is the north elevation, maybe not very indistinguishable from the south elevation, but you can see these are the basic colors that have been contemplated, and again, working with our urban design team to finalize this. What I want to say is this particular project is definitely removing blighted and substandard conditions in a corridor that's a very, very well-used, prominent corridor for our downtown transitioning into our midtown area. It is going to get rid of a vacant site, turn it and convert it, transform it even, into a very productive site with office, retailing, and hospitality activities. Detonation that we're, we've been looking at will soon be gone. There will be parking, and as I had mentioned, the developer is, is adding additional parking along the South Twenty-Fourth Street. There are some EPA contaminations, but the developer is committed to removing those things, so it's really, really creating a win-win for the city as well as for the development community, as well as all those who would visit that particular site. The amount of the TIF is up to four million, and the, excuse me, total project cost is just over twenty-one million that is being invested at this particular site. You may know that this developer is also involved at this particular site, which is Twenty-Fourth Street, South Twenty-Fourth Street and Farnham, the hotel even which is soon to open, and I know that owner is here, if you had any other specific questions, but with that, I would like to ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item forty-three, no further lights, roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jaram, Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-three is adopted seven to zero. Item number forty-four, resolution that the attached the Dukes of Omaha Tax Improvement Financing Rebuilding Project Plan for the redevelopment site located at one fifty-one North Forty-Sixth Street, with the city's recommended participation in the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-four is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, with City Planning again. I have some help. I have some renderings here, but these gentlemen have brought their own that were presented at the planning board that may give you a better idea of the elevations and what is planned at the site. As was already read into your hearing, this particular project is another infill project in the midtown area at the Forty-Sixth and Dodge area, and it is actually the, the Lyman Ritchie Industrial Site. So it's a general industrial site that's been in the core of the city of Omaha, that some of us, or maybe many of us, have driven around and perhaps wondered, it's a very viable business, or had been a very viable business, and still had, is a business, but it may have seemed like it just didn't fit quite being in the middle of the city. So this is an opportunity to take this particular site, a general industrial site, and convert it, transform it completely into residential living. The project does propose five four-story buildings, as you see, along Forty-Sixth Street. So here is the current site, and let's see if I can get this, this would be going north. Dodge Street is here, if you can zoom out a little bit. So Dodge Street is here, this is Forty-Sixth Street, this is California Street, and Saddle Creek, right here. So this particular site is just to the west of various retail sites, restaurants, the newest construction site, and a commercial opportunity that has come to the area is the Walmart, the neighborhood Walmart store. So this particular site will have these five four-story buildings that will transform this particular site. There will be a total of two hundred and, two hundred and eighty-three market rate units, and they're proposing a total of four hundred and fifty-one parking spaces. So again, I'll keep it this way, this is Forty-Sixth Street, Dodge, California. They're going to, into the right-of-way, create about sixty parallel parking spaces that will be right in front of the buildings, and then access to the site would be from this, the north, as well as from the south, but I believe it's to come in from the north, and then they would come out on the south end. Let's see, what else do I want to share? I mean, there's a lot that's going on with this particular project. What I'll just wrap up maybe and just say is that the project, again, it reclaims a site that's located in the Dundee neighborhood, and I know that some of the neighbors, there have been meetings with the neighborhood, and I know Councilman Jaram, Jaram has been a part of those meetings, and I believe that the developer has been able to address most of, all of the concerns. There's a question about a traffic study, or maybe Councilman Festerson has also been at those meetings. There's a question about the traffic study, or a traffic study that was just done, the Public Works Department has just received that, however, they have not completed their evaluation, but based on the developer's review of that traffic study, there don't seem to be too many issues that are of concern that would cause additional improvements to the site. One of the things, I think if I can find my notes, what the study did say is that it recommends, on the traffic analysis, it includes striping, restriping the eastbound left turn movement at the north Saddle Creek Road and California Street intersection to provide additional storage bay length, so stacking. Otherwise, there really isn't too many other, aren't too many other recommendations that it, it has for this particular site, and that the project has really no impact on the existing conditions. So Public Works will give more, further evaluation on that, and with that, I would just say that this particular project is investing a little over forty-three million, nearly forty-four million, into the community at this particular site, and the request is for a little over seven point one million for TIF, for TIF-eligible uses. And with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty, West Center Road appearing on behalf of the, not the city of Omaha, but the developer. With me today is Peter Kai from Augusta, Georgia, as well as Jason Thielen, the E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers in this particular project. We're really here to answer any questions. I guess the thing I would point out is that this is a very, very difficult site. You can see it's long and narrow, it extends from Dodge to California Street. At the north side of the site, it actually drops about fifty-four feet from Forty-Sixth Street down to where the neighborhood market is and the Walmart, and then about in the middle, it drops about forty-eight feet, and then towards the southern portion, it's, it's pretty flat, it drops about one feet, one foot. And there's a substantial amount of concrete here that's obviously a ready-mix concrete plant, and they, we're proud of their concrete, and they, it's very thick and deep, so there's a lot of demolition expenses involved. There's a number of buildings, we have photographs of the existing conditions, if you'd like to see those as well. There's a number of public improvements that are required to develop this particular site, so about one point five million of the TIF is actually going to public infrastructure costs. Peter and myself and the development team, we can consider this sort of the eastern boundary of the Dundee area, and it's going to fit in with the fabric of Dundee. They're actually going to have the decorative street lighting with the flower baskets that are consistent with the Dundee area. Molly Romero came in as the Dundee president, I think of the Dundee Memorial Park Homeowners Association, and testified in favor of this project at the planning board, so we were happy to see that as well. We think it's a great project. The reason why we don't have the little exhibits here with respect to the elevations is because there's such a significant grade change from the south to the north, and with the high point being in the middle, that really, it, it looks uninteresting unless you see how the buildings are actually incorporated into the grade changes and elevation changes between Dodge and California Street. So we thought this was really helpful to see how this will look. Obviously, the urban design code will apply, we'll be back before the council, I believe, October eighteenth for the rezoning and the PUR, and then as far as the plat, that's just administrative because it's really combining a couple lots into one. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, Mr. Jobin, if you can come back.
Yes.
You know, one of the things that happened in this case, which we appreciate, and when I say we, I, I am speaking somewhat assuming my colleague who might have left, Councilman Festerson, would agree, is that your team approached us as the council members for Dundee respectively, although south of California in this area is in District Three, and north of California is in District One, so we both get a lot of questions, and with Mr. Festerson representing such a big, other swath of Dundee, that it's natural people just assume either one of us, or sometimes both of us represent this site. But you came to us early, you asked for our recommendations on, on a process of how could you include the neighborhood? You first met with the neighborhood leaders, then you had a neighborhood meeting, public meeting. You, you took to heart the, the comments that you heard, and you're to be applauded for that, is, is Mr. Khan, his father, the developers. What I didn't hear, although I may have missed it, was the total investment dollar for, that this project represents, that is being done in, in a former industrial site, and when I heard the number originally, I was just extremely elated that someone believed that much in their product, and the investment that they were making, that they were willing to invest substantial dollars. So do you, what, have you found the number?
Yeah, the total project cost is about forty-four million.
So you have nearly forty-five million dollar investment, and the reason I heard for this investment and the belief in this site is twofold. One, it's so close to the cancer center that's, that this council's been so supportive of, and what's going on at the Med Center in terms of the economic development and the jobs, that now there's this demand for the people who want to live close to where they work, the scientists, the doctors, a lot of them travel a lot, and they don't want the burdens of having lawns and sidewalks and shoveling and all the other things that a lot of regular homeowners love, want to be nearby. The other thing I heard was this mass transit system that's developing, and the ability for people to simply step out their door and walk down a Dodge and catch the BRT that's coming, bus rapid transit, so to take advantage of those assets that the city, through its support from this council, and then make such a significant investment while doing it in a way complimentary and respectful of the neighborhood, to me is a win-win for Omaha, for Dundee. I mean, these are four hundred and fifty-one parking stalls that are added. You've agreed that you'll follow the recommendations of the traffic study that's still being completed, correct?
Correct, correct.
You continue to be, and the Duke of Omaha will be joining the Dundee Memorial Park Neighborhood Association, so there's always this open line of communication, correct?
That's correct.
The design has figured out a way to have openings, so people who live to the west, further up the hill, can still see through and enjoy the vistas. further up the hill, can still see through and enjoy the vistas that they've had, right?
Right, correct.
All while adding almost three hundred apartments, luxury apartments. The, the price point on these, we've heard, will be the highest in the area, right?
Yes, close to it, absolutely.
So to me, when, when you're doing all the things that, that the community and the neighborhood expects, that the council members for the area have asked, and you're still pledging here today to do that and continue that, and to use local subcontractors to actually be the craftsmen that build this, this project, to me, that's, that's a wonderful statement about the quality of the, of the team that's putting this together and, and their values. So, you know, I'm pleased to support this, and I'm sure, Mr., oh, there's a lot of lights on. I guess I better be quiet when other people talk. But I would make a motion to approve when we're done talking here.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I agree, and I welcome Mr. Kai to Omaha. This is his first project in Nebraska, so we appreciate that investment, and, and we do appreciate the early engagement that we did have on this and with the neighborhoods. I think you walked through most of my questions. I will say that's the most unusual-looking display we've had here in a long time, but it represents the site itself because it is so unusual in its, in its length and in its grade. That's the nature of it. And at this point, it's only become somewhat of an ice or not even a concrete plant anymore, so redevelopment, I think, is welcome. Just a few questions on the details. So we talked about parking spaces, four hundred and fifty-one. Does that include parallels in front, or is that in addition to the four fifty-one?
I've got the exact numbers here. So there are three hundred and ninety-six parking stalls that are required. There are four hundred and fifty-one parking stalls provided. So inside of the buildings, in the backside of the buildings, on the, would be the east-facing wall, and where the surface parking is back here, there are eighty-three garages within the buildings. There are three hundred and eight parking stalls out in the back. And then there are sixty parallel parking stalls along Forty-S Sixth Street. So that, I think that totals the four hundred and fifty-one. So there's actually a surplus of about fifty-five parking stalls on the site.
Okay. So that number includes the parallels?
Yes, I believe it does, yeah.
Okay. And then tell me a little bit about the landscaping we're seeing there. So is that in actuality what we'll see, you know, five to six trees per building in front?
Yeah, that is the landscaping plan. And, and again, we have to have a certain number of street trees, and I think they actually exceed the number of street tees, street trees. I think Peter's told me his dad is actually a lover of landscaping and is probably accused of having too much landscaping whenever he can. So I think Peter can tell you more about that, but he enjoys lots of landscaping in all of his sites.
And the green space in front, what's the footage of that little green space shown?
I have an exhibit that I can share with you. So this, what this is, is a, an exhibit that shows cross-sections. This cross-section is at the north section. This is at the midsection, and this is at the south cross-section of the development. But what you have here is you have Forty-S Sixth Street, which is twenty-five feet in width. Then you have the eight feet of the on-street parking. And then you have sidewalk of five feet. I'm sorry, my trifocals aren't working very well. And then you have three feet of right-of-way, and then twelve feet of landscaping on the other side of the sidewalk. So you really have about fifteen feet of green space between the sidewalk and the building.
Okay, great. And you talked about, you've already engaged on the flower baskets, and I think that's a good idea, too. Tell us about the materials a little bit. So brick on the bottom, what's the material on the top, on the, on the buildings themselves?
Yeah, there's a brick, cement siding, and there's various accent materials. I, I'd point out also, notice how the, the balconies are recessed into the building so they don't protrude out from the facade of the, of the side wall. So I think it'll be a much better look, much cleaner look. And, and that's true with respect to all of the balconies on the west-facing side of the building, and I believe on the east-facing side as well. There's no protrusion or no balconies that extend out from the building. You have articulation of the roof lines. And again, this went through the urban design review, and it meets all the approvals, I think, of the planning department with respect to their urban design review, with, with respect to not only the building materials, but also the elevations and landscape plan and everything else associated with the project.
And all units are attached by those blockways?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, then the last thing I just said was the traffic study itself. So I, I know it's been maybe the remaining concern of the, of the surrounding neighbors as to how it'll, it'll all work, and I know there's been a study, but it hasn't been fully reviewed by the department yet. Two things on that. So this is just the redevelopment plan, right? We'll have time to get that totally reviewed before?
Correct. The rezoning and the PUR will be before the council on October eighteenth, I believe, is what the schedule is showing at this point. I do have the executive summary of what the traffic study reveals, but essentially, it shows that there, the street systems have adequate capacity. The only requirement, according to the traffic study, without the benefit of the review of the Public Works Department, is that there's a additional striping that has to be on California as it approaches Saddle Creek on the north side of the development to provide for additional storage to make the left-hand turn onto Saddle Creek northbound. Other than, other than that, it has sufficient capacity with respect to Forty-S Sixth and California, Forty-S Sixth and Dodge, and the various streets that were analyzed also on the interior of the development. So everything is adequate capacity.
Okay, so you'd agree with the characterization that the only issue identified was the restriping of the, of the lane?
Right.
Okay. And maybe we can just get the summary before the actual agreement comes back through, but I'm comfortable with that for this first step today. And I would also note, just so you know, that California Street right there, from Forty-Ninth to Saddle Creek, is supposed to get resurfaced yet this year. So that might be the opportunity to, California Street to the?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the north. It should be resurfaced by Public Works this, this, yet this fall, so maybe that's an opportunity to acquire your attorney's area for repainting of the lane there if, if that's needed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can't recall if I seconded, but if I didn't, I will second.
You'll be seconded.
All right.
Mr. Gurnett.
It's a double second, then. Thank you.
I think what is equally is impressive, I don't think that the general public saw that, but the three people, the development team marching down here lockstep, carrying that sandwich, and the assembly of the easels as well. I'm just curious, Larry, did you have a one hundred architects on, on this one?
We, we didn't, thankfully, because as I've said, it's hard enough to develop a project with one, let alone three hundred.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to tag on a little bit with Mr. Jarom, Councilman Jarom, said that the other night, several of us were at a, a function where they had people who were doctors, the new doctors and research people from the med center. And I tried to talk a couple of them into moving out into my district, and they said, "Well, they're still in temporary housing," but they had heard about this project. Because this is what, where is this project? They said, "Well, it's behind the Walmart." So, you know, so that I thought was pretty, you know, really going to help this part of town. Also, I do have some friends who lived over that area, and they were concerned about the height of the places that would block their view, but it does seem like you took that into account.
Right.
And I do want to say, for those of you on this council who can remember where the tropics used to be, I don't know if you can or not, well, you look up the hill where this is right now, and you see all this ugly industrial area. And this is just going to transform that area, unbelievable. I mean, that's?
Yeah, I think it's a beautiful project. I think it will fit very well with the neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item forty-four. No further lights roll call.
Milton, Paul, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jarom, Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-four is adopted, seven to zero. Item number forty-five, resolution that the city of Omaha supports, endorses, and approves a nomination by the Durham Museum in cooperation with the National Park Service of the Omaha Union Station for designation as a national historic landmark.
Public hearing on agenda, item number forty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Kristy Jansen, the executive director of the Durham Museum, eight oh one South Tenth Street. The national historic landmarks are nationally significant historic places, which the Durham Museum is one, our Union Station, I'm sorry, is one, designated by the Secretary of the Interior because they possess exceptional value or quality in illustrating or interpreting the heritage of the United States. The leadership of the Durham Museum, along with our colleagues at the National Park Service here in Omaha, feel that Union Station does fit that description. And so we have prepared an eighty-seven-page application, which will go in front of the National Park System Advisory Board on, in Washington, DC on October eighteenth, and I will be attending on behalf of, of the museum. We, of course, would love the city's support of that application as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you regarding that designation, if you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom, you might want to stay there for this.
Yeah, I'm, I was happy to introduce this, and, and I'm certain we'll have the support colleagues on this. This is a wonderful work of architectural art in our city since nineteen thirty-four?
One, thirty-one.
And the, the Durham Museum has access, fortunately, to the best engineers and architects and construction companies that if you only knew the time, effort, and expense that they go to, to keep this gem looking in the condition it is, it is not only a labor of love and devotion, but at sizable expense. And so this?
I know I relinquished the mic, but I would love to share with you a very brief summary of our application. Like I did say, it is eighty-seven pages long, but this is just a very executive overview regarding the physical appearance. Constructed in nineteen twenty-nine to nineteen thirty, Omaha's Union Station is nominated under National Historic Landmark Criteria Four as a significant early example of Art Deco-style architecture in the Midwest. The station was designed by Los Angeles architect Gilbert Stanley Underwood, then the Union Pacific Railroad's corporate architect, and renowned designer of a number of UP rustic style lodges in western national parks. The ultra-modern appearance was a major departure from previous railroad stations designed by UP and nearly all other rail companies. The station served as a showpiece for the Union Pacific's headquarters and is a visual representation of the railroad's desired image, image of progress, power, speed, and efficiency. Omaha Union Station is located near the designated eastern terminus of the Transcontinental Railroad and serves seven roads, including the UP. The station remains essentially unchanged from its appearance following its construction and exhibits an unusually high degree of integrity.
And what goes on in this building, I would be remiss as a board member not to give you an opportunity to plug what is one of your more interesting exhibits coming up, opening, I think, is it next week?
Saturday.
Saturday, yes. So you want to give a little plug for that?
I sure can. Thank you for the floor. This Saturday, we are opening our first exhibit from the National Constitution Center in Philadelphia. It's called "American Spirits: The Rise and Fall of Prohibition," and it's probably one of the largest traveling exhibitions we have taken on. Very interactive, highly engaging, lots of artifacts. So please come and visit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Of course, this is something that I, I'm pretty sure we're all going to support. When I saw this, I was actually surprised that you didn't have it already.
Yeah, we, well, we are a, a historic place, and I think in the country, there's roughly ninety thousand of those. And of those historic places, there's approximately twenty-five hundred that have that landmark status.
Well, that's wonderful. I, I really hope that you can get it.
Thank you.
Durham Western Heritage Museum is such a beautiful building.
Yes, it is.
You, you never get tired of going there, and then you have, you change the exhibits. So I look forward to seeing, to seeing this one. But I also want to say, every time we seem to have something with the Durham on our agenda, we tend to have a really long agenda.
Long meeting.
So maybe next time, if we ever have Kristy down here, we could, we could just move hers up to the front so she doesn't have to?
I enjoy it, actually. Thank you.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item forty-five. No further lights roll call.
Milton, Paul, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jarom, Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-five is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items forty-six through fifty-five shall be held on third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item fifty-six, ordinance vacating a portion of Eleventh Street right-of-way located north of Davenport Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Fifty-seven, ordinance vacating a portion of Two Hundred and Fourth Street right-of-way, lying southeast of Two Hundred and Fourth Street and Belondo Parkway. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-eight, ordinance to approve a contract with First National Bank of Omaha to provide banking services for the city of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda, item number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item fifty-nine, ordinance to approve a contract between the city and the Elkhorn Public Schools for the city to provide one associate school resource officer named Mark Police Cruiser, subject to the availability of such cruiser and Elkhorn's needs to the premises of the Elkhorn High School located at Seven-Eleven Veterans Drive.
Public hearing on agenda, item fifty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty, ordinance to approve an authorized payment from the city of Omaha to tutor.com for tutor.com learning suite services.
Public hearing on agenda, item number sixty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Sixty-one, is ordered to approve an agreement between the city, the city of Lincoln, Lincoln Police Department to authorize funding, Project Safe Neighborhoods, to provide funding for proactive specialized overtime operations as part of the two thousand and fifteen's Project Safe Neighborhoods grant program.
Public hearing on agenda, item number sixty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda, item sixty-two shall be held on third reading. Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda, items sixty-three through sixty-eight shall be held on the second reading.
Is there a motion, Jarom? Second roll call.
Milton, Paul, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett, Jarom, Mr. President.
Yes.
We stand adjourned at three forty-seven PM.
Thank you.